Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Please be seated. Any citizens who have concerns about items that are not on the agenda? You do.
Joshua, I talked a little bit about that, so if you've got any information, you can edit it at a particular time. And I'm doing it first here because Gene wants to go home and I wanted her here.
Well, I raised a question, sorry, Gene.
We had a question about supervisor mileage. And after trying to get some clarification, I talked to an IRS person who I thought originally did the presentation in two thousand twelve, March of two thousand twelve, when we talked about it at an auditor's affiliates meeting. It appears that we may have been doing it incorrectly as far as supervisor mileage. First is, and I talked a little bit to Joshua, and if you've got anything, please chime in. As I said, I don't want to be an attorney any longer. We, uh, the mileage appears, you know, when you go to any meetings, it appears to me, I would think, that if you're going from your home to a meeting someplace other than the courthouse, that you'd be entitled to reimbursement for that mileage. Is that correct, Joshua?
Well, it comes down to whether you're engaged in kind of business or not. Coming under the code section that you provided, it discusses mileage while engaging in performance of official duties. So the issue is more whether actually going off to a meeting is part of your duties or like in the instance of coming to the courthouse, that's just a commute. You know, everybody has a commute and a commute is not something that's a free.
But before we get into the commute, if we're just talking about they, a supervisor leaving their home and going to a meeting on county business, if they're meeting someone to discuss county business, that would be a reimbursable expense, right?
Well, I would say, I mean, I spoke to you yesterday and I still want to do some more research on this because if, if it viewed that the, there's an office for supervisors at the courthouse, then perhaps the mileage should calculate from the office rather than the home. But I, I mean, like I said, that's something we want to look at.
Okay, well, then that's a, all I'm talking about is past practice, so you'll cover that when we, if you give us some sort of, uh, what we should say, advice of what we should be doing. Because I think the past practice is supervisors have, uh, recorded mileage from their home to a meeting and anything and then back. So we might need clarification on that too, if that's an issue. The other thing is when we get in, but that's what we're trying to get to. I think the past practice has been though, that they've claimed mileage from their home to a meeting and back, and we've reimbursed you for that, and it's not a taxable benefit. That's the way we've been doing it, correct, Gene?
Correct.
Is that, has there been some mileage they've been claiming from a home to a meeting, do you know?
I believe there has.
Okay, so that'll be part of that discussion then. The other item is, is that what we were, thought we were told in two thousand twelve is that the only one that would be taxable is if you were coming to the board or the courthouse on Tuesday for your regularly scheduled board meeting. If you were claiming mileage for that, that would have been a taxable event. But apparently what, what the person questioned me yesterday was, do you have a office at the courthouse that they use? And I said, yes, they share an office. You have an office for the board of supervisors, you meet with department heads, citizens, or other people that come in to talk to you. She's, and she said yesterday she would, that would be a commute. But that was just her opinion, and she said if you wanted an opinion, a ruling, we would have to pay for it. I said, no, we have a county attorney that can do that, so that's.
Which we'll have to pay for.
Right. But that's, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Do you have any questions on that yet, or anything that Joshua should consider?
The, the system that I came from, your mileage started from your office, period. There was a little finagling, you could take an average of, if you went from your home to the meeting, you could do a triangular thing and come up with some kind of mileage, but it was always started from the office. So I've always kind of been uncomfortable clocking from home. And I only do meetings that are official, they're scheduled meetings. I'm in a building probably every day, different building. I don't charge to go say hi to somebody. I don't think that's right. But I, I've always been confused on how we should really do that.
Uh, and we're just doing it for your advice because, you know, we don't check you, we don't follow you around. It's, you folks make the claim, and we're just trying to get a clarification as far as, you know, how it should be done. So, uh, just wanted to, because.
So should we just continue putting in like we normally do until we differ? Or hold off on making any claims or, I mean, I, I do mileage about fifty miles a year or something. I mean, I don't turn in really any mileage, but, um.
I don't know what the practice has been.
I do have some mileage I could turn in, so I, but I can wait.
In the past, didn't turn in any mileage, so it's.
Well, and it'll take some time for me to research the issue and come up with the, some guidance on it. Like I said, it was just yesterday, late yesterday afternoon when I talked to Pat. I would say that, um, just at first blush, my thought is that the, the trip into the courthouse is a commute. And if that's the case, um, I don't think that it even falls under expenses.
I know.
Got a set time?
Yeah, we got a set time.
Okay, but, uh, all right, let's just do the set.
All right, so he's gonna bring it back, you can go home.
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna say with Gene here is that it would involve Karen, the way that you report, if it's a taxable thing, she would just have to put in a different code. Okay.
Okay, item number seven A, hearing and sale of property parcel one seven eight eight nine zero, which is twenty-eight sixteen West Fourteenth Street. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Hearing none, I move the hearing to be closed.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, the sale of property parcel one seven eight eight nine zero. Would you come forward, state your name?
Isaac Swark.
And how much?
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars, minimum bid.
Okay, anyone else wish to bid on this property?
Hearing no on a move, property be sold to Isaac Kurt.
Swark.
Swark?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We hope to see him back very soon for three more that are right next to this one.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, need approval of the agenda for today, August fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of the minutes for July twenty-eighth.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Discussion and approval of claims. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Uh, I went through this thing kind of line by line, because I didn't have something else to do, but it was kind of fun, and half the people in the room got emails. Most of them got worked out. Any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Human resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. CWA Deputy Sheriff Contract Arbitration Outcome Discussion, Ed?
With the MOU or memorandum of understanding that we presented a couple of weeks ago, we, after Board Supervisor Smith and I reviewed it, we sent it to our attorney, who looked at the, our outside attorney, who looked at the MOU and came back with these recommendations.
Are we?
Whoops, is that, is that what we're talking about? I'm sorry, did I start too soon on that one? For the arbitration one we're still on? Okay, I apologize. It's a, arbitration was recommended, or the arbitrator came back and told us that we were at three percent.
Doesn't require action, it's done.
Yes, it's pretty well taken care of.
Need a motion?
I'll go save.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is for the first year?
Yes, it's a one-year, arbitration's always just one year at a time.
Okay.
So it's one year and then with a re-opener, then next year.
So we are set to have a re-opener next year?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, by nature of the arbitration.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approval of memorandum of understanding now.
I apologize, I started a little soon. This was a memorandum of understanding that you should have all received copies of. This is one that Board Supervisor Smith and I had looked at. We, there were a couple of things that we were a little bit, that we didn't think maybe fit quite right, so we asked for the attorney's opinion, and the attorney came back with some change, recommended changes, and that's what you have before you now. Seems to fit the situation fairly well. We had sent the recommended changes to everyone else involved too, and I haven't heard anything back from anybody for objection to it.
So everybody's had ample opportunity to make any criticisms or critiques or further changes, okay?
Cindy really didn't change anything in the, as far as what, I, I would, to my opinion, my, my perspective, which is dangerous, but to my perspective, she didn't really change anything as far as the union was concerned. Just cleaned up the language and made it nice and clean. Very appropriate.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dennis, discussion and action on payment of the county share of the operational costs of the fiscal year fifteen at the Security Institute located at Western Iowa Tech.
Okay, what I'm asking here for is approval by the board to go ahead and pay a claim that was submitted for the fiscal year fifteen, ran out the T, the Security Institute, TSI. The reason I'm coming for you is last year, the fiscal year fourteen payment for the year wasn't delivered to Mr. Brown until September, middle of September. By then, we had period thirteen done for fiscal year fourteen, so we had to pay it out of the current year budget, which means the money was carried over in the fund balance, so there is money there to pay this bill. Now, this year, they did get in time for fiscal year fifteen, so actually we're doubling up the rent for fifteen and fourteen in the same fiscal year. What we'll have to, we'll have to amend the budget to pay the fifteen in the current year, which that was intended for, with some improvements, and then the fourteen was paid already out. So what we want to do is have the board go ahead and prove, we're gonna have to do a budget amendment later, date probably November, December, to put the actual appropriation in there, but there's enough money to cover now till then, and we take it out of the reserves, out of emergency services.
That's.
Yes.
When, when we split EMS and emergency management, I thought that there was no longer a rollover in EMS, that only it would, only for the other part.
The role, uh, for this current fiscal year, the TSI rent for fiscal year sixteen will be paid out of EMA. We did move money from EMS over to EMA for carryover balance. Also, we did leave, appeared now there's eighty-five thousand, there, which forty-four thousand will come out of that, so there'll be actual cash balance of about forty thousand left in the EMS fund for carryover to cover expenses until we get expenses reimbursed from the county. What we're doing for expenses for EMA and EMS, we're paying actual expenses. So when the month of July is over, I'll send a bill to the EMS to be paid and the EMA to be paid. EMA claims will only go before Michelle and the sheriff for approval. They do not come before the board, because that is a separate board. EMS will come to the board as they are the sole governing body. But the TSI rent will come out of sixteen, we did move money over, we split it up, and this will leave forty thousand in the EMA and also forty thousand EMS as carryovers.
Danny, I read this a lot, and I just kept getting more confused.
Okay.
What budget is it gonna come out of next year?
This coming, this year, we're announced.
Sixteen seventeen, we'll go into.
It'll come out of the EMA.
EMS will not have any part of this.
No, and they do not this current fiscal year for sixteen. What we're paying now is a fifteen, it should have been out of the fifteen budget. At that point in time, the rent was covered out of the EMS. For sixteen, which will be billed after July first of two thousand sixteen, that bill will come out of the EMA fund, because that's where we budgeted the money for the TSI. And then seventeen will be budgeted just like it is today, out of the EMA, Emergency Management Agency.
Emergency Services has nothing to do with the Institute anymore financially.
It's just the EMA, and that's why we split them up, because they're actually two different governing boards.
Need a motion?
The motion is to approve the bill?
Well, yeah, to approve the bill, it'll actually come through as a claim next week. So it'll be, you're actually approving the claim before it's even submitted.
So we don't have to do anything today?
Well, basically, it's just action saying, go ahead and pay the bill, but it'll be done through a budget amendment held in December.
Does Gary know why it, it was, it was late? Is there any way we can not have this happen next year?
Yes, I'm talking with Gary, he kept pushing them last year, as I stated in the, oh, the deal I write up for the agenda. He did try to contact them several times, they did not get it until the middle of September. By then, it was too late. This year, they did get it in about July fifteenth. That's the proper time they should turn in, because we have period thirteen open between July and August of each fiscal year to bill back bills or incur before July first. This should not happen again.
So Dennis, this motion says that the use of the EMS cash flow fund to the county sheriff, the Security Institute, operational cost for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, which is covered in the first budget and has done a decent amount of spending.
Correct.
Need a motion? Thank you, Dennis.
I don't want to make it. I appreciate it.
He read what I had wrote out there.
Move what Pat said.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those, now, this is not gonna happen again.
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
As long as Western Iowa Tech gets the bill to them, but trust me, Michelle will make sure it gets there.
Michelle will make sure.
Yes.
Rural Economic Development, Mr. Gleiser.
Good evening, Supervisors, David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. The first item that I want to talk about is the, um, Sharmak Assisted Living Center expansion in Lawton. In working with the city attorney and the city council and the owners, we have come to the realization that with the rollback from the state, that is going to affect the increment that we capture in terms of what, you know, which will pay for the infrastructure improvements that are needed to get the project up and running. This TIF will be for a residential housing TIF. It will be subject to the multi-residential rollback, and we are allowed to extend it up to fifteen years outside of the ten. The city is requesting support from the other taxing entities that are involved, so the school, the city, and the county. We've written an agreement that supports it, and that is what you have before you today.
If this TIF district was started, say, today, post rollback, would they, would they have to start at ten and there would have to be a proactive measure to go to fifteen, or?
Um, you're saying, so like if they started and they didn't have enough, could they extend it at a later?
I mean, if they were to start now with the conditions as they are, would they begin with fifteen or begin with ten?
We begin with fifteen.
Okay. This is a Lawton TIF?
Yes. So we are just saying that we are okay with extending it outside of the ten.
Need a motion?
I'll move it. This will add to their economic base, limit their tax base, add jobs, yep, I move it.
Twenty jobs, three point one million dollar minimum assessment on just the memory care unit alone. And with the street that they're putting in, it's got the potential for development to occur on both sides.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all the.
We, we've never done this before, I don't understand, or why we're doing it. They can do this on their own, can they not?
This is just a letter of support, right?
This, this is, um, the, the housing TIFs are for ten years, but if the elected, and, you know, if the jurisdictions, the elected bodies choose so, they can extend it an additional five years. And so we, we would be forfeiting those five years of taxes. So that's what we're doing.
And they're, they're also asking the school district to sign this agreement as well, because they're the other taxing entity that's affected by this.
Can anyone prevent this?
I would believe so.
I think we could, couldn't we? We could oppose it.
I think so.
But is it usually at a hearing, not usually here?
Well, the, I mean, it's a policy, policy decision of the board whether to agree to it or not. You're not forced to, it's, it's kind of a favor to Lawton to make this happen. But as David said, you're foregoing those five years rather than, than coming back to county there. During those five years, the TIF, or the, yeah, the TIF is still recapturing that money to pay for the improvements in the area.
With a three point one million dollar minimum assessment on the memory care unit, and then with the graduated rollbacks, and at, at the end of ten years, they're not gonna be able to generate an amount, an incremental amount that's gonna be able to pay for the infrastructure that's needed, which is why we're extending it to fifteen. And if, the figures are estimates at this point, we're still working on, a development agreement where if there are gonna be additional townhouse condos, and what those will be valued at, and how many will be built per year, minimum assessed values on that. So I think it's looking at doing the three point one million dollar memory care unit first, and then two years down the road, doing an additional townhouse condo, living unit, valued at two hundred thousand dollars, and then, you know, so many, and then.
And David, do you know, how, how are they planning to meet the requirement related to the low income housing? When you do, relating to housing, that requirements in the code section? Do you know the answer to that?
I, I do not.
Because there's a reference to in, in the agreement, which it says, some of which will include the potential for low and moderate income housing. I think the code section, it's a shall rather than a, you know, a potential or a may. And it's not really a question that has to be answered before the board can sign this agreement, but, I mean, it is something that, they'll have to comply with that.
I would assume that they would, in order to meet that requirement, that they would allow people of a certain income level to live there.
Can you, it's okay to sign this at this point, we're not behind the eight ball on any of this?
Right, if the board is comfortable with the concept of extending it from ten to fifteen years, then there's no issue with doing that agreement.
All those questions, can you get to us, why don't you write something up and send it to us? Okay? Yes.
That's what they're asking for, and I think the reason why they're kind of doing it now before some of the other documents are in place is because they want to know whether they're working with the ten-year TIF or the fifteen-year TIF. So it's appropriate to do it now.
So it's, but it's an agreement.
But it's, it's an agreement, it's nothing more than saying we're, we're gonna allow you to do fifteen years rather than ten.
And is this because it's a housing TIF?
We do have, we do have one other, in Woodbury County, has a county correction bill, where they use a low, moderate income approach there. So, but this is the first one we've had where the board had to sign off on going from ten to fifteen. If the increment is larger than the payments, it's automatic to release. The other, we have to release it, so we're covered there. But it cannot be impacted, it would be very good, because when they build a unit of this size, it'll affect other service within the town of supervisors to them. But this is the first we've had, going from ten to fifteen.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item B.
Item B, um, the Ultimate Fitness Incorporated is, has been approved by staff and board for a economic development loan through our Investing in Woodbury County Loan Program. Two percent fixed interest rate on, for sixty thousand dollars on a five-year term. We come in at eighteen percent on this project. Soolan Economic Development Corporation is at eighteen percent. Central Bank comes in at fifty-six percent, and then personal family money comes in at eight percent. And the project is going to construct a new building on an undeveloped parcel in Sergeant Bluff, twenty-four hour access fitness gym, and it will create three to four new part-time jobs, and it's a nice quality of life amenity for the city of Sergeant Bluff.
When you say staff and board, you're talking about SCDC?
Correct.
Okay.
Soolan Economic Development Corporation.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Nara.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mark Nara, Woodbury County Engineer. Um, first item we have on the agenda is a final review of the departmental policies on road upgrade requests and vehicle use policy. These are both written as in force, but brought to the board for comment and reapproval.
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That was a lot easier than I thought it was gonna be.
I was hoping it wouldn't be too difficult. As I said, nothing really had changed with those two. Uh, next is consideration of an approval of the contract for replacement of Bridge X one oh one on three hundred and twenty-fifth Street. Uh, the project total cost is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Uh, this bridge lays a little west of the town of Danbury.
Need a motion?
Move to approve the contract of Dixon Construction.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
And finally, consider, or I guess this isn't finally, I have two permits. The first permit is for, um, work within the right of way to allow the community of Cushing to organize and sponsor their Uncle Ben five K run. This has become an annual event for the community, brings a lot of folks. This has become an annual event for the community. Brings a lot of folks in who like to do those road races, and it's always been well administered, no problem for us.
Is this a running event?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, well, run walk. So, they have age bracket divisions and everything.
Need a motion?
Move to approve the permits.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
I've gotten a little old and slow for those myself, but, uh, some people still enjoy them, so. And, uh, our next one is, uh, consideration of permit to work within the right of way for Amy Webb. She is looking for some dirt for foundation of a new building on her farm property. Um, she is, uh, horseback riding and rodeo that the family does, and they're looking to construct a new building out there. Uh, Hundred Ninetieth is one of those dirt roads. It has the deep cut banks on it, and, uh, they're looking at peeling the south bank adjacent to their property and fence line. When they're done, they'll reset the fence line. All in all, it, uh, is a, a project that causes no harm to the county road and, uh, may even enhance it just a little bit. It is a dirt road. When it's completed, uh, it'll remain a dirt road, but, uh.
Mark, um, are, are these two right of ways somehow both connected to Amy Webb? Or just one?
It's just one along Hundred Ninety Street.
I'm just asking because.
It comes out into Grundy just a little bit.
Cause the proposed motion is both of them say for Amy Webb.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a typo on my part. The other one is for the Uncle Ben group, which is, uh, Ben Karstens who runs that, so.
Move it.
Need a second? Uh, second, for Amy? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Can I blame it on the word processor? And getting in a hurry, I suppose.
Okay. Uh, committees, um, spent some time the last, uh, three days trying to track down the architect on, uh, law enforcement center and the elevators. Finally got a hold of him today. You wanna talk about this, Kenny?
I, uh, gave Mike Neswick with R M L a call today, um, looking for some updates. And, uh, we, uh, he, he was currently tied up last week, but is, uh, making some changes, um, to the original drawing, uh, that we showed you to the front of the L E C. Um, we had some cost concerns on that. And so, we asked him, uh, to make a few changes that we thought might make sense and would also save the, the county some money. I don't have the drawings for you today, but in the, in the previous drawing that you had, uh, it showed the, uh, what would have been the current, uh, stairways going up to the entrance, uh, drawn out, uh, in a big circular pattern. Uh, we asked him to cut those back, um, which would make the entrance platform smaller. Uh, it would reduce that footprint, uh, saving, uh, you know, quite a bit of concrete. It would also save, uh, we talked about squaring it off, so, uh, you wouldn't have a, a rounded effect on the front end, uh, which also save in labor costs, uh, on an installation on that. As part of the handicap accessible area, uh, we asked him to do a, an alternate on, on what it would cost, uh, to heat that area, heat that sidewalk area, um, since it is, uh, an eighty-eight accessible area. And, uh, he will be adding additional costs for that. There's some remediation, uh, uh, things. Um, Mark, I think you know a little bit more about that maybe, or?
I saw them measuring in the back parking lot this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I didn't get to see that, but I understand that they were there, uh, they were there. Ed's got a little background information on it, I believe.
There was a discussion between the engineers and the D N R. Maybe you? And, um, the D N R, since they're paying the bill, has decided the unit will go in the back.
Yes, that's correct, uh.
Oh.
It's a combination of three people. You've got Cunningham Lindsay, which are kind of the keepers of the underground tank fund. And, uh, then you've got, uh, D N R, kind of the project managers, uh, paired with the contractor, Northwest Environmental Services. And what, the engineer for Northwest Environmental Services has always maintained that, uh, it was a superior location to be in the back. They did wanna look at, uh, possibly placing the, uh, building in the front, which would have taken the two parking places, the two handicap places that we had looked at. They ran tests, uh, to see if the, if they got enough vacuum, uh, from, by taking everything to the back of the building. Uh, the, the tests worked very well. There's a great deal of additional cost by having the, the building in front, plus it'd be kind of unsightly, uh, sitting there in front. Uh, but it was mostly the cost and, uh, issue of gaining, of getting power to the building there in the front. After the discussions with Mid America and everything, they decided it was better in back, and, uh, like I said, their test was very successful. They got, uh, plenty of draw. They're looking, they're gonna be here tomorrow morning at nine thirty, uh, and, uh, we're gonna walk through the building again. Walk through what the project would entail. They're gonna submit their, after that, they'll submit their initial report to D N R, hoping to have approval back from D N R by the seventeenth. And then, um, hoping to have everything laid out as far as the, uh, the pipes underground, uh, by mid-September. Uh, that would run to the back of the building, and hoping to have the, um, the mitigation begin around the middle of October. Uh, there's some, uh, pretty high-priced equipment involved, and they just rent that for a six-month period of time. They have to give a six to the ninety-day lead to the manufacturers to be able to re- even rent the equipment, so. They, all of that's on notice. Their contract, subcontractors are lined up. Looks like it's pretty much a go, but it has to get the final approval from both D N R and from the folks at, uh, Cunningham Lindsay.
In your discussions tomorrow, um, I'm talking with Mike Neswick.
Yes.
He had a conversation with the engineers.
Okay.
He needs to know how big the holes are gonna be and where they're gonna be. And after a half an hour discussion, he didn't have an answer.
I usually try to get them to a bottom line. Let's get to the point here. Uh, it's gonna come out, uh, four inches below grade. That's where it'll come out of the ground. And, uh, they'll, they, they're gonna try to, their hope is to have, to possibly have the pipes completely in before, uh, it's even that, before the contractor begins to work. Unless, uh, but that's why we're gonna try to involve Mike as well.
Can that stay there after they're done?
Yes, yes. And worst case scenario, they could, uh, they could fill the pipe with concrete afterward. So, but yeah, it should be able to stay there. It shouldn't be noticeable to anyone.
This thing has been on a fast track and it's taken forever.
Yes, it's a slow fast track.
But it is coming.
Yes, yeah, it should be there, yeah. I think it'll be great to have it finally cleaned up and, uh, completely off our radar.
Um, just from my perspective, uh, seeing the heated sidewalk outside the courthouse, uh, I think the cost on the rest of it's gonna have to really be ugly for me to vote against heating that. Cause I think that's essential with a ramp. Uh, an icy ramp for the handicap is probably not a good idea.
Yeah, and, and it's awful hard for building services.
Salting it is even worse.
Awful hard for building the services to be there every minute, whereas the heat stays on.
Are the pipes gonna be on the interior of the building?
They're gonna, they come up internally from one of the monitoring wells, or one, one of the, one of the eradication wells.
Elevator shaft, or?
No, they're, they're, they come up on the inside and they're gonna drill through the wall.
And take it out along the side of the building then?
It, it'll come out to the, to the south of the building in the front. And it, that's where it comes out four inches. Currently, what they measure is it comes out four inches below grade. Then they have to take it over to the sidewalk. And we know there's another well out there too. They'd also have to take it over to the sidewalk then, and then run it back along the west side of the building. That's where they have to tear up the sidewalk, so they gotta get it down low enough so that it's not gonna freeze or anything. Uh, they, they are gonna tear up the sidewalk there and then re-cement over the top of the pipe, uh, once, once that's, once those pipes have been laid and taken back to the shed.
They're making a major operation out of this, aren't they?
Yes, yeah. Well, they, they tried to put, they looked at it, putting it in front, but evidently there's issues with getting po- appropriate power to it. And, uh, because they couldn't get power to it and some other things, the electrical costs have been substant- uh, the cost of running electrical to it would have been substantially greater than running the pipe to the back. And then you've got the issue that you've taken two handicap parking places, you moved them down, to reduce the parking that's available on the front. And there's also issue with access to water and that type of thing. So, not to mention the looks and that, and those pieces, plus they could only run after six P M. and then stop at six A M. if it's right out there in front of the building.
Is this gonna delay the working from the building?
It should.
Okay. Uh, Ken? Are they getting rid of the platforms that they, the architect came back with? Are we back to replacing just the steps, or are we?
No, we would replace the step, the steps area and the front entrance area, the platformed area.
So, they're doing away with the picnic tables on?
No, the picnic tables would stay. We'd ju- we would just be reducing the size of that, that footprint that you saw in the earlier, uh, drawings and versions of those.
It'll be a much smaller area and it will not have the indention in the front on both sides.
Correct.
It's gonna have two rounded corners and that's it.
Correct.
I have to bring that out to, um, get past the steps and have a platform up above.
Right.
If we can get back to the design that's there and replace the steps, that's where I'm at. But building a platform, you know, what, what we looked at is just, uh, a lot of window dressing.
Well, I, I think, um, I, I think one of the things that, that we were trying to do is get away from all of the steps that we currently have, um, to, to alleviate some of that maintenance, uh, and, and cleaning issues that we have attributed to all those basically around the whole front that we have. Um, and trying to reduce that down to basically one or two openings, two if you count the handicap as an, as an opening, one, one being one main stairway. Um, so we can alleviate all the snow removal and, and so forth of all the steps that we currently have. And actually all of the, um, you know, the, the, the concrete degrading. But, um, as part of that, it, it costs a lot more money to put those steps back in than it would be just to, uh, just to have one platformed area and one set of steps.
So, it's more cost efficient to have a platform in place of the stairs, and that's why.
Much more cost efficient, yes. Mike, did you have a comment you wanted to add?
Okay. I wanna make sure that I got said that everybody's looking at these stairs like the stairs are cheaper to put in. Them stairs are gonna cost you three times more to put them in, and it is that you're ready enough to make a nice seating area. You can't squeeze them, cause then if you squeeze them, it's gonna make a part of that building. That's why we put the platform there and then put a little seating area out there for people to be able to use. Right now, they come out, they sit on, they sit on the stairs, and you, you can't walk up anyway. You have to have people sitting there. All in all, it would be, uh, beneficial to count, to, to do this.
I'm not convinced, but.
We can figure it both ways.
I'd like to see it.
I mean, it'd be crazy if you didn't have the cost to do that. Stairs are expensive to put in. Very, especially when you're talking all the way around.
Of course, you're, you're, you're putting in platforms, then you're putting in, then you're putting in railing around that?
Which is minor compared, which is minor compared to the stairs that are going around on it and everything else.
The cost is gonna be way higher. Your cost is gonna be way higher. Your, your liability if somebody gets hurt is way higher. Uh, the salt we go through, and the salt is the reason why you're scared right now. Our bad is that so much is easy to keep as they're like, yeah. So, there's, there's a lot of hit and what.
I'd still like to see difference in cost.
That's something we can, we can, can ask as a, a second option, or an alternate option.
Okay, let's go to elevator.
Elevator. Uh, also talked with Mike Neswick today with R M L on the elevators. Um, a, a couple of things we did last week was go, uh, reviewed the elevators, uh, and, uh, the thoughts on what should be replaced, what should be changed, uh, what could be, what can't be. Um, as part of those conversations, um, Mike has contacted the, um, historic preservation people and, uh, the National Park Service, um, is also involved. They've, uh, requested that R M L submit, uh, uh, plans on, on, on what we'd like to do. Uh, they also have requested pictures of the areas, uh, that might be affected. Uh, one of their comments was that, um, although we can go ahead and make changes to the elevators, they, uh, definitely would not like to see any, um, changes to the lobby areas. Um, that would affect anything that would, uh, change historical preservation value. And, um, Mike is, uh, I think he just received that email, uh, not too long ago from them, and so he'll be, uh, getting that information to them and asking them for their sign off and approval to move, move forward.
That's about all I heard.
That's all I got, yeah.
Anyone else? Any citizen concerns? Board concerns, comments?
State Chairman, we got a nice, uh, letter from the mayor of Crexionville, inviting us to their, uh, town for a community meeting. I was just wondering if we're tentatively slotting that in for November, if there's any thoughts there.
You get that today?
Uh, it was on our agenda.
Oh, yes, okay. I have not talked to him. Um, it would be November. I've thought about putting Crexion and Cushing together, but I don't know that that's a good idea. They each have their own needs. So, uh, the next one we have scheduled is Sergeant Bluff on, I believe, the twenty-fifth. We will have a board meeting here that will be, uh, hopefully as short as today. And then we'll travel down to Sergeant Bluff, and they have what they call their community conversation, which will be the third in the series. Last time they had about three hundred people show up. Um, it's a pretty intense evening. There's a lot going on in Sergeant Bluff. We will certainly not be the main show. Uh, it will be all the activity in Sergeant Bluff along with the school district, so. But I think it's important that we show our attendance.
So, that's a Tuesday? So, I, August, August twenty-fifth is a Tuesday, so I'll have our meeting and then we'll just extend our meeting?
Yeah. Okay. I will get with, uh, Crexionville. Need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I've got a comment. Uh, could we have the sheriff give us a report on Prairie Hills, because it, it just don't seem to be using at all?
Uh, in my conversations with him last week, um, the short staff, and I think a lot of that's due to hiring practices. Um, Sioux City, have they hired?
City was supposed to, I don't remember exactly how many, they were supposed to.
Five.
Five of them.
Yeah.
Now, we had sixteen out there on Sunday.
That's a weekend, folks.
Yeah. But still, I have, you have to stab it. And that's all we've had out there in over a month, so I'm just wondering if, uh.
I'll have him up here.
Just, um, for the public's knowledge, the county email address change should be. Just, um, for the public's knowledge, the county email address change should be effective Friday.
Really?
And, uh, apparently the dot gov, um, help desk, for lack of a better word, uh, required us to have county in the domain. So the, uh, actual domain will be at woodburycountyiowa.gov.
Wow.
So I think, um, you know, I'll have to coordinate changing the agenda, what's on the agendas and, and our website. Probably Friday, by Friday, Karen. That's what that means.
So I don't think we're supposed to use it until Friday, but we got that by, uh, IT department advising us. That's the go-live date.
And our, if we have business cards, those may be outdated too. Unless you wanna cross it out and get the right, that doesn't look too professional, I don't, I don't think.
The old emails will work for a little while, I'm not sure how long, so we will eventually need to change those for department heads.
You did run into station area issues and business cards.
Yeah, you just heard somebody ordered like fifteen hundred business cards. You live with it.
If we hit tough times, we can cross out the Sioux City and write.
Yeah, hopefully times aren't that tough and we can have something a little more professional.
Need a motion to adjourn?